Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the January 15th Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is also the first of three public hearings regarding the sales tax. Today Ted Kallo, Commissioner Kallo has our dog from the dog pound. For those of you who don't regularly attend, we bring one each meeting to get adapted. So here we go.
Good morning. We start this off again in New Year with dogs. Sit down. Come on. You only listen to Gennaro. I have a three- or four-year-old female child that was found at a duck pound in Carlisle. Real easygoing dog, friendly. It does all kinds of tricks, Gennaro tells me. Just doesn't listen to me. It's like my kids and wife. Stop by our dog kennel and pick up a new friend.
Our thought for the day? Arguing with a fool proves there are two. Madam Clerk?
At 10 o'clock will be the first sales tax hearing under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bill.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
There is appropriations. There's no advances and repayments.
Okay. You're on the ball.
I'm on the ball today.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
All second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of hires I wish to discuss, which you had at Golden Acres, and a few issues of ongoing labor discussions with regard to our collective bargaining agreement. Both of those are permissible topics under the same term law for executive session, so it acts that we convene into one at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of this name for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for January 12th, 2009.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve an enter into lease agreement with Robert Taylor Agency at 227 Broad Street, Elaria, for 2,800 square feet of finished office space at a cost of $7,200, payable monthly at $600 for a 12-month period effective retroactive to January 1st, 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an enter into a lease agreement with Soil and Water Conservation District at 42110 Rusher Road, Elaria, for 2,046 square feet of finished office space at a cost of $21,605.76, payable monthly at $1,848.48 for a 12-month period effective January 25th, 2009.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Award contract to Expedex for the copy paper, envelopes, and various paper products for Lorraine County Administration Building, Office Services, and Job and Family Services effective retroactive January 1st, 2009 through December 31st, 2009.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Soloway's, approve the community grant funding request for the year 2009 from the account Recycle Grants in the amount of $1,568,675.41.
So moved.
Second, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I see, Mr. Billman. Do you want to make any comments on these?
We're fine.
We're fine? Okay.
It was a press release around here somewhere.
It'd be nice if we had it, too.
You have it, Mark?
I don't have the press release.
Dan, you bring it down?
Mr. Billman was supposed to.
He did do it. Did you bring him down?
Yeah.
You leave one for the Commissioners?
I gave it to Sandy yesterday.
These are all based on population, and there's a formula, correct, that how it's all divvied up between the different municipalities?
Yeah, it's actually defined within the Soloway's plan, correct?
Right.
Why don't you come to the podium? We only do this once a year, and you can have your 15 minutes of shame.
You're so good to me. Dan Billman, Soloway's Director for the Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Dan.
I have the grant awards sheet here, if you'd like to take a look at it. We've been doing this since about 1989 or '90, when it first come into being. It started out at around $900,000 for the grant to help the cities and the townships. We used it as an incentive for them to start recycling. Through the years, it progressed to 1.2, and then a few years back, we started giving out 1.5-plus million dollars. And that's what we're, I'd like to have you vote on today and approve. It's still an incentive, but it's kind of like, everybody expects it every year, but they still have to do paperwork, grant paperwork, and submit paperwork every quarter to show what they're doing with the funding. So I would recommend that you approve the grants.
I made a motion.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve an enter into contract with MS Consultants Youngstown in the amount of $299,997 to provide engineering services for reconstruction of Abbey Road from State Route 254 to the Elaria Corporation Limits in Sheffield to be paid from the professional services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the sake of expedience this morning, I know we need to get ready for our 10 o'clock hearing. I'll just reserve any comments, and maybe we can get our executive session in before then, I'm not sure. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I do have one matter of pending litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Just a quick report. I took a little trip out to the dog pound yesterday, and I'll tell you what, since we have the pound keepers out there, it's very, very clean. All the dogs had water. I was very impressed. The new little pound keeper girl, I think her last name's Upton, I don't think she's related to you, though. She was really professional when I came in. She didn't know who I was, and she says, "Will you sign in, please? And will you sign the waiver, please?" And she was really nice. But the only thing is, we got brand-new cages out there, like eight of them. There's no slots for the water and food bowls, so they're just sitting in the cages, and the dogs are tipping them over. So we need to somehow find a way to attach them to the cages or make them like...
They used to be attached to the doors, you know?
In old cages, they are, but the new cages, there's no slot for the bowls, so the dogs are tipping over the water.
We'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thanks, Commissioner.
But everything else out there looked really good. I was impressed. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Well, other than getting ready for the sales tax under Correspondence Number 11, the Port Works Committee in the City of Lorraine is going on the ballot in May to renew their levy to support what they do down at the Black River Landing and such, and they're looking for the endorsement of the Commissioners. I'd like to make a motion to support Lorraine County Port Authority, if possible, for a levy in the primary ballot.
Second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Thank you. That'll do it till we can get our executive session in prior to doing the sales tax hearings.
Just two items I would like to mention. Under the requisitions that the Commissioners approved this morning, there was a total of $2.2 million of blanket purchase orders that are attributed to the Commissioners for the year, their professional services and general fund obligations, $2.2 million. And then I would like to extend condolences to the family of Robert Callaway, who passed away this past week. He was a dean, many titles at Lorraine County Community College, but in addition to that, Robert was a member of Midview's Board of Education, and he'll be sadly missed in our community. There are services today at Lorraine County Community College starting at noon. That's my report.
January 21st at 6:00 p.m. will be the informational meeting on the sales tax. January 22nd at 10:00 will be the broth hearing ditch. Same day at 10:30 will be the second public hearing on the sales tax. The 29th of January at 11:00 will be the IAC meeting. And I also received from Attorney John Slager, agent for petitioner's IRG Amherst LLC, withdraw the annexation petition for 142.631 acres from Amherst Township to the Village of South Amherst. Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to speak, not regarding the sales tax, but about this business? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by our Administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
We'll be back at 10 o'clock.
What time is it, 9:40? What time is it, 9:50?
Okay, we're back for our first public hearing regarding the sales tax, and I want to thank all of you for attending this very important public hearing. Today, we will be asking for input from the public regarding the proposed sales tax alternatives, which I will have our Assistant County Prosecutor Jerry Ennis explain in just a few minutes. This Board of Commissioners attempted to pass a sales tax increase, which all of you know was soundly defeated. At the time, we were looking at projections that indicated we were facing serious financial difficulty for 2009. Well, here we are in 2009, and unfortunately, those projections were correct. Our expenditures have been exceeding our revenue for some time. We have frozen budgets for years and attempted to cut our departments in the past, which we ended up reinstating due to the need to provide services. We were able to do that because our carryover at the time allowed us to do so. We are now at a point that without the sales tax, we won't be able to give our departments the money they need to carry out the services the residents deserve and those that are mandated by the state. I would like to give you a few examples of where money is being spent. One of the biggest hits we took was the local government fund. Due to a shift in population, the distribution of these funds reduced the county's share by $3.5 million. The cost of healthcare has skyrocketed. We have budgeted over $7 million for insurance and pensions, even though our employees are now paying more for their premiums. On Monday, we appropriated over $2 million just for utilities for all of our county buildings for this year. We are now paying on the debt for the Justice Center, which is $1.8 million. The cost of attorney fees is now well over $1 million. We are mandated to give Job and Family Services $1.5 million every year, and due to new mandates from the state, we are well over $2 million that is going to the Board of Elections. Our revenue for last year was about $55 million. The certificate that we have to work with for this year is $49 million. That's an additional loss of $6 million. We are also anticipating a decline in interest income of over $3 million, which total $26.8 million. Keep in mind that county government is all about service to its residents. That means the majority of our expenses go to salaries. That's why this Board of Commissioners, when having to cut budgets to meet our certificate, had no choice but to cut the salary line items by 20%. We have some tough decisions to make in order to keep Lorraine County safe and prosperous. We are not immune to what is happening all over this country. The economy is brutal, and we are all feeling the effects of it. Over the last two years, this Board has tried to combat some of those effects by creating jobs. We were successful in creating over 2,400 jobs in Lorraine County, but it's not enough. The unemployment rate is still unacceptable, and now we are adding to those statistics by the layoffs we've been forced to make. We need to bring our people back to work, especially our safety forces. We can only do that with your help and support for the sales tax. This is your county, and it's ultimately up to you to determine what you are willing to give up if the sales tax fails. You need to keep in mind that we are one of the largest counties in the state of Ohio, and we have one of the lowest sales tax rates. How many of you have shopped at Crocker Park or other retail stores in Calhoga County and never gave a second thought to how much higher their sales tax rate is? There are things that are out of our control, like the rise and fall of gas prices. If we want to drive, we have no choice but to pay the price. We have no control of where the profits go. The sales tax, you do control. We have made the decision to put it on the ballot for your vote. You can vote yes, or you can vote no. There are no profits to be made. No one gets rich with this increase. It's only to maintain the services that are necessary and needed. The meeting will run as follows. First, I will give my fellow Commissioners a chance to comment. Then, if Jerry Ennis could explain the tax alternatives we are considering, I would then like to hear from the various selected officials that are being impacted by the cuts we had to make, and then I will open it up to the concerned citizens to ask questions or to make comments. There's normally a three-minute time limit for comments, but due to the seriousness of this issue, I will waive that time element. So now I will open the floor to Commissioner Kallo and Commissioner Blair.
Nice job, Commissioner. You basically wrapped up what's happened the last four years, our first term in office is the loss of revenue and increased costs. We talked about this in 2007 as a need, trying to get ahead of the game, doing what we felt was physically responsible. As Commissioner Kukowski said, it was beaten four to one. We've tried to live within our budget, which has cost us to decrease services by decreasing personnel through cuts in our salary departments, and we're going to make the case and hear from the public as to what you believe we should perform as county government versus what we're mandated to perform. And we'll be looking for the input. We have a pretty good turnout in spite of the weather this morning, with Wednesday evening's hearing at 6:00, and then next Thursday's at 10:30 in the morning, I believe, so I'm ready to start when you are. But Commissioner Blair, your comments?
I think that both of you have outlined the problem before us very well, and since this is a public hearing, I would prefer to hear what the public has to say. Thank you, Commissioners.
Jerry, would you like to tell them about our alternatives we're facing?
Thank you, Commissioner. In order to enact any sort of sales tax, the Board of Commissioners are required by law to conduct two public hearings. So this hearing today is the first of those. There will be another one on Thursday, January 22nd. Those are the two official hearings that are required by law. The Commissioners have elected to have a voluntary evening one on Wednesday, on January 21st that is not mandated by law. The Commissioners are going to be considering several different options, and I will try to summarize and explain those in layperson's terms. The first is a quarter percent increase for general revenue. And if they enacted that one, the revenues from the taxes would not be designated for any particular purpose, but just go into the general revenue. They also, as a second option, are considering a half a percent increase for those same purposes. The second option they're considering would be a quarter percent increase, and that's for the purpose of supporting criminal and administrative justice services. That kind of tax, then, the revenues from that tax would have to be used for those purposes. That covers anything that has to do with the criminal justice system, from the work done by the sheriffs, the work done by the clerk of courts, the work done by the prosecutor's office, the work done by the courts themselves, municipal courts, to the extent that we share in funding them to conduct criminal proceedings, the appellate courts, the coroner's office. So it covers a real broad range of an area. So they are considering a quarter percent tax for that. They also are considering the possibility of a half percent tax. The third group of options that they have are combining those, in which they would designate part for the general and part for the criminal and justice system. And in that respect, they are also considering the possibility of a quarter or a half percent increase. With each of those first six options, after they're done with these hearings, if they decide to go forward with that, what they're considering is enacting that by emergency, which means that it would go in effect after sent to the tax commissioner and go into effect in April of this year. They propose, then, that they would have that certified to go on the ballot in November to be approved, and if it failed in November, then that collection would cease after that. There is one other option they're considering, and that is under a different revision of the code, and that would be a quarter percent tax for the operation, maintenance, construction, repair of detention facilities. And I believe they have in mind the county jail and/or the juvenile detention facilities. That tax cannot be enacted by emergency legislation. That would have to be put up for vote, and if that would be done, I think they anticipate asking that to go up on the ballot in May. So I think that summarizes.
Thank you, Jerry. Like I said, is there any elected official? I see Sheriff Bill Stomitty, and I see Tim Looby in the back. I know if he wants to come up to speak on behalf of the judges, you're welcome to come up.
That's okay. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Sheriff.
I know you've heard me speak before on these subjects, and anybody that's watched any of the Commissioners' meetings have also. I guess I just want to reiterate how the sheriff's office budget has been devastated by the 20% cuts. Obviously, from the general fund monies, we were cut about $1.1 million. And as you know, I've had to lay off 12 full-time deputies, eight part-time deputies, and two typists that work in the record room. We've also shut down the record room for the night shift, which obviously presents problems to us, too, when people come out to the jail, they've got to stand out in the vestibule so corrections officers can take care of them, find out what the problems are. But that's no way to operate either, and I think you know that, too. I'm cutting out support cars, which is a great program. I'm starting that February 2nd. And where that's worked real well for us is, obviously, Captain Resenda has started a program where they write down every time they assist a person. They also answer calls to avoid overtime. When we have deputies coming in in the morning or in the afternoons, if there's a late call that comes in, as soon as they go into service, they've got to drive to work. We send them to those calls. Inmates in the hospital, again, that affects us also. When we have inmates there, sometimes we'll have them there for a week. Obviously, you know deputies got to guard them. So on their way into work, we send a guy there as soon as he goes in service, and then the other guy leaves there on the hour, which avoids overtime. And as you know, this happens quite frequently now, because these inmates that are out there obviously never take care of themselves, but we're mandated by law, once they're in our care and custody, that we have to provide these type of services. Once again, you don't make the laws, and I don't make the laws, the state legislators do, but that is in the law. You know, we also provide the only police protection to the approximately 55,000 people that live in the townships. You always get to think, "Well, can't the state patrol do it?" They are not peace officers under the law. They can assist us under a mutual aid, but they cannot go and handle domestic violences, robberies, and things of that, unless they happen on state property. We're mandated to do that service. We can get assistance from other departments, but once again, they have no authority to come out into the townships. We always have between 2,400 and 2,500 warrants, constantly. We're out-serving warrants. The grand jury is indicting another 100 people a week or whatever, so it's like a game that you never catch up to unless you have people to go out and provide the service. Sex offenders, we almost have 700 in Lorraine County. That's the sheriff's job to do that, not the city police. You know, they're not mandated to do it. We are. Foreclosures, once again, as you know, the civil office, along with the clerk's office and the prosecutor, everybody's involved in that process. Unfortunately, we had 2,200 of those in 2008, and I don't really see it slowing down in 2009. Carrying concealed weapons, we've issued over 3,800 of those licenses. The record room people do that. Obviously, you know there's the jail overcrowding issues that we have, and it's, you know, I always say around December, the judges get a little benevolent around Christmas time, and you start seeing some people getting released. We were down to 350 at one time, which is pretty low for the 422 that we can hold. Well, I can tell you, we're back over 422 again, and here it is, what, January 15th? So it's not even summertime yet, so I can tell you, we'll probably be back around 500 when it's summertime. Lorraine Jail, yeah, has that helped a little bit? Yes, that has helped. But unfortunately, they can only hold so many inmates, and obviously, they're going to get rid of the inmates that they can get rid of. And, you know, it's a business for them, just like it is a business for us. And I can't blame the municipalities, I guess, for trying to transfer that cost on to us, but by law, if they charge them under a state charge and they bring them out to the jail, I have to accept them. I can't say, "Guess what, guys, the inn's full here. We're not taking them." I've already got prosecutors' opinions on that, and check with other sheriffs. You can't refuse inmates that they bring out to your jail. That's in the law, also. As you know, the projected 2009 for the jails, about 12 and a half million, a little bit over that. I've been budgeted so far about 10.6, which is almost about a $2 million cut. And I know I spoke to the Commissioners on this also, and once again, that's a mandated service that I have to provide. It's either that, or I try to locate space to ship these guys to, but we're going to pay as much money, if not more, by housing these people, which the bill has to be paid, and transportation costs, and they won't accept a certain type of inmate. Obviously, any medical problems that they have while they're out of your custody, once again, we're responsible for it. So, and as you know, as the deputy's on the road, I'm down to sometimes two and three people out on the road. That's a very dangerous situation, not only for the officers, but for the citizens. We've already had some instances where we've had some suspicious cars being, you know, people calling up, saying, "Gee, a car's down in this court. He shut his lights off." We had five deputies at the time. Every one of them were tied up on domestics, attempted suicides. It ended up being a burglary of one of Mr. Norris's homes. He was very upset, but, you know, it wasn't that we were holding calls. You know, we explained to him that, "Hey, these things are going to happen. They're probably going to be more frequent as the summer months come." So obviously, if we could have set somebody there on that call, we might have caught that guy right in the act of that thing, but it's not a pretty picture, which I know you guys know that also. So I'm going to open it up for public comment, but I just wanted to give you a little brief overview. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other elected official or somebody being, representing one of the elected officials would like to come up? I see Sally.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other elected official, or somebody being, representing one of the elected officials would like to come up? It's a long walk from way back there, you should've sat closer.
Good morning. This is, I feel weird with my back to these people, because I really would like to speak to the people who came here to hear the public comment, so.
Your back isn't, so if you look up at the monitor.
I know. I don't like these HDY things, because, why enough? Anyway, I'm here on behalf of Ron Nabokowski, Lorain County Clerk of Common Police Court, and I would like the public to know what cuts we have made to stay within the budget that we've been appropriated by the Lorain County Commissioners. Our staff does all the paperwork to send people to jail, get them out of jail, all the paperwork for every single court case that is filed in Lorain County, as well as the Ninth District Court of Appeals. This has to be done, or the judges can't work, the sheriff can't work. We have to get it done. We've had to lay off six of our deputy clerks, as well as have all of our staff members in the legal division take a 10% cut in pay, which means each person is off one day during a two-week pay period without pay. So we've done everything that we could to stay within our budgets. We have implemented a closed from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, so that paperwork can get done, things can be entered in the computer without the interruptions of the phones or people coming to the counters. So if you come to get your notary renewed at 9:30, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait till 10 o'clock, because we won't be open. Ron has been at the forefront of organizing Lorain County Foreclosure Task Force. Some of those things have had to be put aside now that we have this budget crisis going on. We're very concerned with the foreclosure situation in Lorain County, and have been trying to do everything that we can do, including sponsoring meetings to get help for people who are in that situation. We've seen a tremendous rise in credit card cases. That's the thing that's coming now. I think for every foreclosure we have filed, we have 30 credit card cases filed. They're filing them in our court, no matter how much anybody owes, because they think they can get them in and out fast. Well, they're not being too fast now, but the whole economy situation here is very difficult. We're all trying to do the best that we can, and I think it's important for the public to know that there are offices that have taken deep budget concessions, like the sheriff, prosecutor, judges, certain areas. The people who did get raises, I thoroughly understand, are the people who are in the unions, and the MRDB, and the children's services that are funded by levies. That's not general fund stuff, and I've understood that for years. So I think that's something important that the public should understand, that your basic services that you see maybe every day, or maybe don't see, unless you're called for jury duty, are the things that are really being deepest cut by these general fund budget cuts. So I'm hoping that this tax will be passed in some form or another to help out these departments that really are inundated with the biggest brunt of the work right now, with less people to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else? Tim Looby? Doug Messer? Nobody?
I didn't see him.
I think I see him. They all sit so far in the back.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Try to hide in the back, but you found me.
I see that.
Tim Looby, on behalf of the General Division Judges. I know my bosses are very anxious to see the direction that the Commissioners are gonna go, and obviously, the public's comments on the tax proposals. On behalf of the court, I think we're very proud of the contribution we were able to make to the Commissioners' budget cuts, we were able to implement those. The judges do have concerns about their ability to carry forward with those restrictions long-term. We're looking at it on a quarterly basis, and obviously, we'll be revisiting the cuts that we've made for the first quarter to make it through. Ultimately, the judges don't act in a vacuum, even though, even if we are fortunate enough to continue to move forward and not suffer significant service, the services that we provide to the public, I know the judges are concerned about the other departments, because, again, we don't operate in a vacuum. As Sally Pack just commented on, the clerks are a very necessary function to what the judges are able to do, similarly, the sheriff's office. If the judges ultimately have to put an individual in jail, they are not capable, obviously, to convey those individuals today and keep them there. So the sheriff, as part of what they necessarily do, impact the court. All these various departments are all intertwined, and the court is, I could say, very clearly concerned about the budget in Lorain County, and supports the Commissioners in their desire to supplement the funds that currently are available. So we are anxious, and we'll wait to see the direction that you go, and we'll willingly provide what support we can.
Thank you, Tim. I don't see any other elected officials or their representatives standing up, so we will now go to public comment. If you would, please use this podium on this side, and before you begin, the only rule we have is that you state your name and address before you make any comments. So anybody willing, come on up, Dominic.
Madam Chair, can I intervene something?
Sure.
As part of these hearings, we are required by law, whenever we are gonna do a tax for the criminal justice system, we have to make a statement setting forth the expenditures that have been made for the year 2007, or the previous two years, which in this case would be 2007 and 2008, of the expenses made for the criminal justice system. We also have to put forth the projected expenditures for the year 2009, the current year, and then we have to put forth a statement projecting what the expenditures would be for the next coming years, which would be 2010 and 2011, both if the tax passes, and if it does, is not enacted. And Lisa, there's a document out there? Okay, there was a document on the back table there that set forth all those projections, so I just wanted to make the public be aware of that. And just as one little comment, if you look at those figures, and if you look at what is projected for 2011, what we're all hearing today is about a 15% cut. Those projections envision a 30% cut in the future, and I just wanted to make the comment, for the benefit of those peoples who are in the cities, and we've heard a lot about the sheriff, but you need to understand, this is gonna affect law enforcement in the cities, because people who are arrested there, excuse me, and processed, come to our system. So they need to understand that. And what we're talking about is in two, three years, one out of every third criminal is going to be able to avoid the justice system, based on the funding that is projected. So I think that's a message that we need to get out to our cities, not just to the townships.
Morning, Dominic. Dominic, we know you, but you need to tell your.
Dominic Manachi.
And your address.
1631 Missouri Avenue in Lorain, Ohio.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Over the last 16 dedicated years that I have worked for Lorain County Sheriff's Office as both a corrections officer and a sergeant, I have seen and experienced a plethora and overabundance of scenarios that I'm sure you can't even envision. Today, as a corrections officer and a member of the Board of Directors for the Lorain County Sheriff's Employees Association, affiliated with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association, as well as a taxpayer and lifelong resident of the city of Lorain and Lorain County, it is a great concern to me that the budget for the Sheriff's Office has been forced to take such an imaginable cut. I have and will continue to attend these public meetings that the Board of Commissioners are holding during the month of January, giving input and suggestions to help solve these problems. I have been actively writing letters to the editor in an attempt to educate the public and make them aware of my concerns for public and officer safety as a result of such cuts. We do not represent deputies in our bargaining unit, however, the impact of losing 20 deputies, 12 full-time and eight part-time due to layoff, places our corrections officers in a dangerous situation, as well as raises liability on the county. Should something happen, such as an escape, riot, suicide, or life-threatening situation at the jail, they are our first responders for such a crisis, to assist and gain control of the circumstances, not only in the county jail, but also at the Lorain-Madina County Community-Based Correctional Facility and the detention home, which are all located on Murray Ridge Road in Elyria. The propensity and inclination of such a condition is more prevalent than ever. The jail is and has been majorly overcrowded with serious offenders, whose several are facing the death penalty by lethal injection or life in prison without parole for the charges of murder and aggravated murder. These criminal offenders have absolutely no question, nothing to lose, to attempt and free and liberate oneself, and the criminal offenders are well aware of our situation with manpower issues and overcrowding. It is my suggestion, idea, and plan to suggest to my fellow county citizens and the Board of Commissioners to promptly and without delay, to use your authority and impose a one-half percent sales tax increase earmarked for the safety services. I do understand that imposed sales taxes aren't popular, however, I think you will agree that as public servants to the people, we must at times do what is unpopular for the safety and betterment of our community and society here in Lorain County, Ohio. I entrust that my fellow citizens in Lorain County will and do understand and support such an increase. I also don't understand that it is our job as a law enforcement collective bargaining unit to educate the public on such issues and the need, more so than ever, to upgrade safety services during these very hard economic times. Commissioners Kao, Blair, Kokowski, and my fellow citizens, please take this into great consideration. When times get hard, people become desperate. With the lack of income and jobs, the crime rate will increase, causing more overcrowded dangerous conditions and unsafe hazardous conditions for our officers. In closing, I am willing to volunteer and spearhead a citizens committee, once the half percent sales tax is imposed, to educate the public and the voters and my fellow citizens for the need of this sales tax increase. However, it must be earmarked for safety services and not a general fund increase. Truly, when the people know and understand the why and what of any issue, using common sense, they will support it. This one-half a percent, 50 cents on a $100 purchase of taxable goods, will generate at least $14 million per year. 50 cents on every $100 of taxable purchase. This is enough revenue to subsidize the bigger jail, the courts, the Sheriff's Road Patrol, the Sheriff's Records Division, which is responsible for the registration of sexual offenders living in our county, to protect our children from victimization and unfair ill-treatment, as well as issuing character-to-weapon permits to restore and to restore full funding to Lorain County Prosecutor's Office. Dennis Will and his staff work firm and fair to hold violent criminals accountable for their actions to the fullest extent of the law, as well should be. The ability and concern for the people's safety in any community should be the number one priority of any government. Our ability to incarcerate safely criminals who violate our families, neighbors, and children is a necessary, costly, unpleasant subject matter, which must be endured for a civilized, law-abiding society.
Very well said. Thank you, Dominic.
Question. Hang on, don't run off. So you're saying supporting safety service, you're talking about the half percent criminal and administrative justice system.
Exactly.
Okay, just know the wording's proper.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dominic.
Come on up, next one. Anybody else wanting to speak? Go Bucks.
Good morning. My name's Mike Griffith, I live in Sheffield Village. I wanted to come today, I come with an open mind, but also as a very frustrated taxpayer. I run a business, I read the paper, I watch your meetings on Saturday, probably more than most people I know. I'm a former councilman in Sheffield Village for 12 years, that we were in the black every year, and this is a number of years back. I do believe in fiscal responsibility, and I guess I have a few questions, a few thoughts, and maybe to create some dialogue or communication. I guess when I say I'm a frustrated taxpayer, you know, when you look at these numbers, a half percent or a quarter percent doesn't seem like a whole lot. However, when you look at the whole picture, it just seems like, whether it's the local, state, or federal level, it's just a constant influx of raising taxes, getting more money from the taxpayer. Sheffield Village is talking about raising taxes, I said Lorain wanted to raise taxes on the license plates, you can go on and on. And then when you look, you buy a vehicle, you pay a tax. You resell the vehicle, and somebody else buys it, you pay a tax. You walk in here, you see signs for licenses for your dogs for tax. Everywhere you go, it's a tax. And I think as a taxpayer, and from a number of people who voice their concerns to me in general conversation, there's always a little bit of a lack of trust between the taxpayer and the people who are working for us, managing our hard-earned money. And I need to be convinced that every stone has been unturned, every option's been looked at, all efficiencies within human reason have been put into place, so that you folks are representing us and our hard-earned dollars efficiently, practically, and from a business standpoint. I respect everyone here, and I understand that the people who are working for the county for us, I understand they would support this. I have not made my mind up yet on this. I read some things in the paper, one of my questions is, you know, I heard that, you know, we've cut back, and we're not giving raises, but then I heard the one young lady say that the increase through the union was funded by the levies. My question is, when these wages are negotiated, are there any criteria put in the contract as, say, and earmarked that says, we're gonna give you 2% based on us having X amount of revenue? For example, you mentioned we had $55 million, but now we're down to 49 million. And you've mentioned that we've been looking ahead and saying, well, we're not gonna have as much money. Who negotiates these contracts? And can't we put something in there to share with our employees, if we can afford it, but if we can't, can't we say, hey, I'm sorry, if we take these cuts, if we don't have this kind of money, we can't afford to give it to you? Who's in charge of that? Who does that?
I would think that would fall, we don't have an HR department, Mike, but actually, the bargaining units have their own bargaining people. I think we have one here from the Deputies Association, I told Dave Noel earlier, he can probably explain that, how they copy those from county to county. And then we have a consultant who comes in and does ours, we have 20 or 21 bargaining units at this point. Jim, you're probably better at this, 'cause you're a pro-mono HR guy.
Wow. And then I used to be the HR director for a number of years. What you say makes perfect sense. It's unfortunate that we've never been able to negotiate that. The, in the collective bargaining environment, they want, you know, a concrete contract, rather than reopeners with respect to funding sources and revenue streams. We have, various times over the years, tried to innovate the negotiations with respect to being able to revisit certain issues, depending on need and/or fiscal condition, and we have not been successful. And you can see that in many labor contracts, even in private business, so public sectors is no different than that. I will say that we have not had a huge labor problem in Lorain County over the years. It's been, off and on again, it's been a little bit tenacious, but I wouldn't call it a bad relationship. And also, we do have 20 distinct bargaining units within Lorain County, and at least a half a dozen competing unions representing the employees. So we're constantly in negotiation somewhere with somebody, and we get whip-sawed quite a bit because of that. So I think your comments make perfect sense. I'm not sure that we would be able to actually implement them, but it does make, the thinking's good.
I guess, you know, everybody's prefaced their comments by saying, these economic times, we're in tough times. I mean, my industry, I'm a seasonal business, I had eight price increases, I can't get anybody to pay me, I could sit here and whine to you for two hours, but that's not my nature. But in the same sense, tough times require tough decisions. Tough times require people to look outside the box. And if you're going to use $49 million of our money, maybe you need to go to people and say, look, we're gonna give you this, but you gotta give us that, or we need to have some things built in. Maybe now's the time to reevaluate some of this stuff, so that we don't have to come back here in a couple years and face some of these same problems. I guess I'm just, like I say, I'm very frustrated about some of this stuff, and I'm just wondering, you know, what else can we do to make us more efficient, more cost-effective, and not hurt people's lifestyle and their jobs? I mean, every time the price of a product goes up, you get more money through the income, through the sales tax. So you have a built-in escalation clause for inflation. It's built in. If the product went up 10 years ago from 100 bucks to 200 bucks, you're doubling what you're getting in the taxes.
Can I interrupt you there?
Yes, sir.
Because we go back a few years, I mean, it goes out of trade, so.
Sure.
We could commiserate about our private businesses for a couple hours together. But you also have to remember, as the times get tougher, even though there are price increases, there's less people spending those dollars, so actually, sales tax costs have been increasing 1% or 1.5% per year, when the cost of actually doing business is 3% or 4%. So it's automatically sliding back, not keeping up with that inflationary cost. And we also have the issue of, in your business and my business, we make our decisions based on our decisions. In our case, here at county government, we have mandates that we're required to perform, be it, the sheriff has to take them, they have to go through the system, so when Sheffield Village, where you're from, arrests someone, they bring them to the county jail. If that person ends up having a hangnail or a heart attack, we have to take them to the hospital and absorb that cost. And with the economy nowadays, and I'll take you through the justices, because I think that's where most of our focus is, I think we've said that publicly.
Okay.
through the system and convicted up to, we have one left that's four and a half years now. Our top eight or nine criminals who are sitting who have not been adjudicated, based on the way the system works under our laws, is almost six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. Sheriff, help me, if you can come up here, our drawers, somebody help me with the numbers so I'm not saying something wrong. Am I close on those? About ten people, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars we have spent on housing them and feeding them the last four years, where they haven't been through the system yet. Once they get through the system, we get to ship them off to the state. But as you're aware, as courts work and our laws work, and you're innocent until proven guilty. Those are the costs that we bear that we can't regulate. Yeah, we can't control. Good work, Commissioner. So when you're saying as to peel back, our costs, our personnel, and the services we perform, when you're saying we're taxing, 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 if you go to the movies, you pay a ticket for a service, which is no different than county government, to go in and see that movie, that may be an enjoyable part of it, as we talk about a sales tax or even the current sales tax, we're six-point-two-five percent in Lorraine County, there's eighty-eight counties, there's one county below us in the entire state, start county at six percent, and they've been back and forth talking about an increase. We have had to peel back what we can do or can't do based on laws and by what state laws have allowed. The local government funding, as Commissioner Kowski brought up, there was an agreement put in place many years prior to us here, that when the population shifted from the townships unincorporated area to the municipalities, which are the cities and the villages, state money that came in to support the county was shifted to those municipalities and taken away from county government to perform services. That's not something that we did, or you're telling us to control. That was a law that was put in place. Out of our six and a quarter percent sales tax, for those who aren't aware of it, a quarter percent is dedicated just to the jail, about seven and a half million dollars a year. We now, we're looking at near five million dollars we're going to need this year from the general fund to pay for jail services when the quarter percent jails tax was supposed to do that. A half a percent of your six and a quarter percent, which is about fifteen million dollars, is what helps pay for county government. It's one of our four or five major funding revenues to perform services. The other five and a half percent goes to the state of Ohio.
We get three-quarters of a percent.
No, we only have half a percent for county operations.
But I mean, overall.
Quarter percent is dedicated, correct.
Overall.
Three-quarter overall. So when you're saying it's not quite like our private businesses, and I've tried to do that since I've been here, coming from the private sector, there are issues out of our control such as, I can turn the heat off in my building when we go home at night. I can adjust what my expenditures are in a business. Here, we don't have a lot of those options because it's based on what's mandated. County government is a form of state government, and what the mandates are passed, we have to, if you want a law passed, it comes from the state legislature down to us, be it in the prosecutor's office, what the judges are required under mandated sentencing, or what the sheriff has to perform. So as you're asking us to cut back, if we had to go down to a forty-nine million dollar certificate, figuring we expended fifty-eight million this year and did twenty percent cuts.
Was that before or after the cuts? I mean, it's fifty-eight million and then you-
Fifty-eight million, that includes the cuts.
That's our carryover, with our carryover, correct?
Correct. We had forty-nine point eight million dollars they gave us this year, plus eight and a half million in carryover, ended up being about nine point two million. Okay, but we had fifty-eight million we appropriated at the end of last year, prior. So we've got about seven-hundred thousand dollars that has to be re-appropriated when everybody returned to the general fund. If we have to cut another eight and a half million dollars to get down to forty-nine million next year, you are looking at doing the same cuts we did today, plus more, plus the inflationary costs, as you know, everything goes up every year, and we never hold our costs, so. I mean, you're looking at, we will look at anywhere, as Jerry said, one-third of everybody who has to come through the justices, because that's seventy to seventy-two percent of our budget, will not go through.
Let me ask you another question. Because like in business, I have a lot of things that I don't have control over either. I mean, I'm just reading about workers' comp and everything else, they're going to raise that, even though I'm in the good sheep family now and such. Do we get our state representatives in here and say, "Hey, we got a problem. What can you, you're elected to help us, what are you doing"? I mean, do we get them in this cooperative group here and give them some of these problems, some of these walls that you folks are facing, so that they can go down there and fight some of these battles for us? Like, and to go beyond that, because I don't know the answer, but something that's always bothered me is that we pay more money to house prisoners than we do to educate our children, and I have a real problem with that. But like, for example, how many people can you, prisoners can you put in a cell? Is that mandated by the state?
Yes.
Yes.
And how many is it?
Besides the cell and everything else, it's all mandated.
Five?
I think two.
How many is it?
Two.
Two per hundred square feet, and we're grandfathered in at eighty square feet because three years ago, we renegotiated with the Department of Justice in the state of Ohio, if I'm wrong, Sheriff, correct me, that we could stay grandfathered eighty square feet because they were mandating us to go to a hundred square feet, and we got grandfathered in based on how it was built ten or eleven years ago.
Is this something that we can go to our legislators and go back and say, "Hey, these are the problems we're facing, you know, we need some help"? I mean, is this something, is that just impossible, or is that something that is-
It's not impossible, and we continue to work with them. We got a million-dollar grant for that jail that was built in ninety-four, ninety-five, whenever it was built. And they don't have any money to share with us, they have their own problems.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe you put three people in there. You know, I mean-
No, no, they come and inspect what we do. And the last time they were there, I'll put it in my words, but they're probably not the exact words, but they wanted to get us to comply with the regulations as they see them today, which is one person in that cell. And the sheriff had to go back and point out to them that that jail cell was built to specifications at a specific time, and that was the requirement at that time, and we were in compliance with the requirement at that time, so the acquiesced.
I understand it.
You got to watch them all the time.
Didn't we actually get sued by some prisoners back in the late eighties, early nineties? I think we actually had a prisoner lawsuit and some changes that we had to make pursuant to that lawsuit, it was over the overcrowding issue, and I see Dominic sitting there, I can't see the sheriff back. Yeah, it's been a while, but that's-
There was a federal lawsuit where an inmate sued us for violating some rights to overcrowding prior to the addition being built. And a federal judge ordered early release of nonviolent misdemeanor criminals. We reached the capacity at that time of one-hundred-and-sixty-six inmates, and any over that, he had early release.
So, you know, we get into that situation again, and the comments you made are very good for the public to hear, because as soon as you put a few of them in a cell like that, they'll file a federal lawsuit, and we'll end up spending a lot more money than we are now. Funny part is, we ask our military to go overseas, and we give them less accommodation to get prisoners in the jail. You know, but, you know, so be it, I mean, we're ordered to do those things.
Right, it's got to be very frustrating to you folks, and I, you know, I guess my question is, is that a fight that you can't even, it's not worth taking on because of so much bureaucracy now in our government? I mean, when I would go down and visit USS COD, you know, in Cleveland, the submarine, the bunk is five feet, eight inches long, and you had three of our men, of our people sleeping in that rotating every eight hours to protect our country, yet you can't put three guys in a prison cell, you know, as a taxpayer and as a person who loves my country, I don't get it. I don't get that.
Well, in fact, I've been on the COD too, so they were sleeping on top of the torpedoes back there. The other thing that you mentioned with the state, let me say this, a few years ago, the state imposed for two years a temporary one percent sales tax increase with the promise that that tax would sunset after two years. It did sunset, but they reneged on half the promise because they kept a half a percent, thereby taking over almost fifteen million dollars additional from Lorraine County and returning no additional funds, in fact, reducing or freezing at the time the percentage of money they were sending back through the local government revenue funds, and continuing to lower their share of attorney-defense fees, which is supposed to be at fifty percent, currently hovers around twenty-six percent, while taking more money from the community. And the other thing that I'd like to say with regard to spending habits, and you indicated that when the price of goods go up, we generate more revenue, well, you know, I've said this before, but I want to continue to try to get it out there. We're a donor county with regard to sales, potential sales tax retention to pay for services within the community. Lorraine County has historically only retained eighty-six or eighty-seven cents on the dollar of potential sales tax revenues because people are going out of county to spend. It's a huge misnomer for people to say our tax base is a little bit lower, so people are coming here to spend. They're not. In fact, they're spending more of their dollars outside the county, so we are importing more than we're exporting. And what I say that is that, you know, we have a deficit, and that deficit is getting bigger. If we were retaining and breaking even on giving and taking with regard to services and spending patterns, we would have, you know, an additional thirteen percent of revenue, and on our three-quarter percent, that would, you know, that would generate well over three million dollars additional revenue that would be in the coffers that we don't receive because we're a donor county. And at the size of the county that we are, we are listed as being in the poor category for sales tax retention. Some of that has to do with being adjacent to a major core city such as Cleveland and with the resources that are in Cuyahoga. Interestingly enough, though, that Cuyahoga is just slightly above breaking even. But if you take a look at the reports from Erie County, they're at about one-thirty-five. They generate about thirty-five to forty cents additional for every potential dollar that they should be generating in sales tax. That's one of the reasons why, you know, one of the arguments people have made is that the sales tax stays low and people will spend here so we generate more money, and it's really a very inaccurate, and you haven't said it, but it's inaccurate thinking with regard to that. And even if you look at Bass Ford, which was just named the largest auto dealership in the state of Ohio, they're doing great out there. But if somebody comes across the border from Cuyahoga and buys a car there, we don't get sales tax from that. That's a destination sales tax. So that's, if they can come all the way from Columbus, and that sales tax money follows them all the way back to Columbus, a lot of people don't know these things. And this is a good time for these hearings, for us to continue to flesh out these issues as we think of them, to try to get that component out to the taxpayers about what stays here and what doesn't stay here.
I'm aware of that, and I think it's a good point. I also think that, for example, our former crown jewel, the Midway Mall, I mean, they never did finish the cloverleaf off of fifty-seven to get there.
It's still on, on the planning stages through New Acquah.
When my father put the parking lot in in the sixties, I think it was on the books.
Well, all good things come to he or she who waits.
It'll be, and if you try to go down West River Road, you better drive a four-wheel-drive vehicle because it's, the road's so deplorable. Now, I would think that Avon Commons in Lorraine County is going to help a little bit in that respect, but a lot of people are going to Westlake to the promenade and such like that. Sandusky's a bit more of a destination point because of other activities and such, so yes, we've got a tough situation in that respect, but there's things you can do to enhance our appeal, if you will. I don't want to take up too much more time, I'm sure there's some other people that want to say some things. I would like to say that I think it's imperative to continue to get the message out, the word out, because the last time when this tax came around, it kind of felt like, here it is, you don't have much to say about it, it's coming. And I think that didn't sit well with the taxpayers. I think forms of this nature, it's difficult for many of us to come during the day because of other work requirements, although today because of snow, I have the ability to come, but most of the time, it's a little more difficult for me. But I think that you might want to consider meetings more often in the evenings or other times also, so that other people can have a voice heard. I also do feel for the people in the townships because of the sheriff patrol that they're lacking. I know that's a big issue. And I guess I'm just saying, one other question, is there a way I can get a copy of your financial reports and budgets and stuff? Is that public information? Because I would like to study that a little bit.
And Lisa will make them available to you.
Who would do that?
Lisa, our budget director.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Mike, if you need a hand understanding it, a government budget looks nothing like what you and I do. It took me months to go through it, to figure out exactly what they all meant, so if you need a hand call.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Griffith, I'm glad that you came and asked questions. I'm sure a lot of other people had those same questions, so thank you.
I just want to do my due diligence so that once I make my opinion and voice it to whoever's around me, which I will do, I'm going to try and base it on the facts that I have and help my community in any way I can.
Sir, I wanted to respond a little bit to something you said. I think if you, if you want to do some homework, and if you want to look at what our sheriff deputies and our county personnel throughout our court system make in comparison to what officers and court personnel and that sort of thing make in the cities, I think you'll see that they, that we aren't certainly extravagant. I know our employees are constantly saying, "Why do we make so much less than they make in the cities"? And I know several years ago, the sheriffs had a hard time keeping deputies because we would train them and then they would go to be police officers because they make more, and that's not a knock on our police officers in the city, to follow up on your comment. I've always wondered why we pay people that shoot basketballs and throw footballs fifty times what we pay the people that are out there sacrificing their, endangering their lives every day. But the point is, I think if you, I know our assistant prosecutors who work full-time try twelve, twenty cases a year, make less than prosecutors who work part-time in the cities. If you compare, and it applies to the staff people too, so, sometimes we're on the opposite sides of unions, but they have a hard job too, trying to protect their officers to keep up with what other people make. But if you compare the salaries of county personnel to other entities, I think you're going to find that our people here are on the low end of the scale.
Sir, it's not a reflection or any animosity.
You just commented, "Why don't we negotiate?"
But, well, I will say this, these folks are elected to represent us, and it's their responsibility to make sure we live within or below our means. If we have forty-nine million dollars, that's what we got. We got to make that work, whether we like it or not. And that may not be something that a lot of people want to hear, particularly the people who work for our government, who work for us, but everybody wants more money. Everybody could use more money. I mean, I've never, I don't know anybody that says, "Gee, I got too much today, I'll give you some back." If we could get eighty thousand people to come out here and watch guys perform, we could probably pay them more. But the reality of the matter, that's just, that's life. But I feel it's your responsibility to make our budget within our means. And I'm not saying I'm against the tax increase, I'm not saying I'm for it yet. But when I've been on council in the past, I've heard the same argument, we've lost people and we've kept people. You know, sometimes the grass is greener on the other side no matter where you're at. And there's a lot of people that aren't even working that would wish they'd have a job. There's a, I know a lot of people who are losing their homes, losing their businesses, falling deeper and deeper into debt, scared, unsure of what their financial future's going to be, trying to put, pay their bills, just wishing they had a decent paying job with benefits. So do I begrudge anybody that? No, sir. But we have to live within our means. And if that's mean and cold-hearted, I'm sorry, but I believe that. And if we can create more jobs and do other things so that we can have a more vibrant community, that'd be great. I've lived here all my life, you know, I could have went somewhere else to work. I have roots here, I like Lorraine County. I mean, I can deal with the snow, it's okay. But we've got to live within our means. And we've all got to work together to try to make this a little bit better. You can't do it by yourself, everybody's got to have that attitude. I mean, it's a team. It's a team.
Again, if you want to do your homework, if you look back over what raises have been given across the county for the last, we have been scrimping and saving for three, four, or five years now. And the point we're at is we just can't do it anymore. And the other point is our sales tax is lower than just about anybody's anywhere. And I don't disagree with that.
Mr. Griffith, living within our means means, like I said in my opening statement, then the community needs to decide what services the county will no longer provide. I mean, what are you willing to give up if we live within our, in our certificate, live within our means? And to piggyback, I'll let you answer that, but to piggyback on what Jerry Ennis was talking about as far as salaries, the majority of our directors, not including like Mr. Cortez and Hopper, but they make about the same amount as a line worker at Ford, our directors. So it's nobody, not many people in county government are getting rich here. I mean, the benefits are good, the P E R S is good, but the actual wages for our directors and things are quite low.
Well, you know, I'm not here to cast dispersions on it, that's not my point.
No, we're just trying to help educate you as you are us, as how, you know, your questions and-
But, you know, I've got people, I know, I could sit here and tell you, you know, I've got a friend that's fifty-two years old that's scared about losing his job. He went to his boss and said, "Look, if my job's in jeopardy, I'll take a pay cut. I don't want to reinvent myself." I mean, these are the problems that many of us are facing, okay?
I agree.
And, you know, I'm assuming some of the things I'm saying and questioning you folks have already done because you're my representative.
Right.
Okay? Somebody's got to do that. And I'm just a taxpayer who reads these things daily and wonders and questions, so I thought I would take my time and spend my gas money to come up here today to introduce myself And I'm just a taxpayer who reads these things daily and wonders and questions. So I thought I would take my time and spend my gas money to come up here today to introduce myself and get a few things off my chest, so my wife didn't have to listen to me.
Mr. Cortez, you do have an appointment with the unions to open up negotiations?
I do.
Okay.
We, we're going to go back and have some discussions. Once again, I don't want to misrepresent. We, we have had good relationships with, with the unions, but they have concerns from their membership and some issues thereafter. But we will once again have the dialogue. They have not refused to have dialogue, you know, and in some environments, they don't even begin to have the dialogue, so.
So we are still trying to reopen the contracts to see if the unions would help participate as far as the wage increases.
That's one thing to look at. Commissioner Calo mentioned, the electricity and air heating costs are another, overtime is another thing to look at. I mean, there's, there's hundreds of things you can look at.
For clarification purpose on the heating and air conditioning, our systems are fully automatic and they do shut down. And reduce on the weekends and in the evening. We, we did an energy, energy conservation upgrade just a couple of years ago. We invested about three and a half million dollars. Now, before anybody jumps up and says you shouldn't have put the three and a half million out there, the, the three and a half million is being paid for by retained savings from the energy conservation initiatives. And then after the ten-year period of payback for the debt service, we will be achieving a positive revenue stream per se. I mean, it's not positive, but we will, we'll have a reduction in our energy cost for the life of the equipment. So we have taken those steps too.
Utility costs, Mike, we, you and I, in our private sector business, when I brought up, we can choose to do those things.
Oh, I still do.
Right, me too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. Mr. Knoll. Please state your name and address for everyone that does not know you.
My name is Dave Knoll, thirty-seven fifty-six Crest Road, Cleveland, Ohio. And I am from Lorraine County. The last nine years, I've lived in Cuyahoga County. One of the things I wanted to address, and there's been a lot of talk, and I know the administrator talked about this. For me living in Cleveland, to come out, if I want to spend a hundred dollars at a store and I want to, right now in Cleveland, that would cost me seven seventy-five for sales tax. If I come to Lorraine County, that's six and a quarter, that's a dollar fifty. At fifteen miles a gallon, I'm spending more than that in gas just to get there and back. So I think that's unrealistic that people are not driving to this county to save sales tax. And at four dollars a gallon, it was even worse, so. But one of the things I wanted to just point out to the people is, Cuyahoga County is the highest at seven point seven-five percent. And it's the only county at that rate. The lowest county is Stark at six percent. But forty-two counties in Ohio are at seven percent. Twenty, or fifteen of the counties, or I'm sorry, five of the counties are at six and a quarter, fifteen at six and three-quarters, and twenty-two at six and a half. So more than forty-eight percent of the counties are at seven percent. To me, I think we should be looking at a three-quarter percent to make, so that this thing gets resolved and we don't, we're not revisiting it again in two years or three years. I mean, I, I don't want to spend tax any more than anybody else, but I'm already spending more living in Cuyahoga County. And I, like I said, I was born in Lorraine County, my family's been in politics. I was a former deputy sheriff and now the executive advisor for the Deputies Association. And we have some of the, if, the guys that are laid off and the girls, if they could stand up, these are the laid off sheriff's employees. They're not all here. There's another, several that are not here that weren't able to attend, and I'm sure the weather helped with that. But the, the realism of this is, is last night, we had three people on the road for afternoon shift. On the way here this morning, I saw an accident and I called it into the Ridgeway Police with a truck overturned on Route Ten. And they responded with three cars and an ambulance and a fire department. We didn't even have that ability to respond. I mean, if we would have sent three cars to an accident of that nature with a rollover, there would be no protection for anyone else. And the problem is, the sheriff's department not only does things for the townships, they do things for the cities. And that's what people have to understand. And the sheriff explained that. I mean, there's warrants that have to be served. Anybody that's charged with a felony, you guys can sit down. Anybody that's charged with a felony, they get indicted and they become the county's liability. So they leave the city jail, they sit in the city jail waiting for arraignment. Once they're arraigned and indicted, they're, they're sent to the county, they now become our responsibility. And like the sheriff said, if they get something wrong medically, we have to tie up a car for eight hours continuously while they're in a hospital for one shift that leads on to the other shift. So if the sheriff is forced with two to three people on the road and he has to take one of them, send them to a hospital, what happens when you're out, you're in your house? If one of the things you want to sacrifice is the ability for somebody to respond when you have a prowler trying to break into your house, that's a scary situation. Or you have a wife or a husband that's, they're fighting and threatening to kill people. This is what we're sacrificing, this is what we're taking away. Not to mention the safety of those officers. Because now we have two people working the road, one to back up another one that may be forty miles away. And it's absurd. By the, by the FBI standards, we should be at a hundred and ten people for the townships, for road patrol. We're currently at, how many, how many are there now, Brian? But I mean, with the layoffs, how many are on the road?
Twenty and then one contract car.
So we have twenty people on the road right now servicing the entire county for all the shifts. And to split up with vacation time, holidays and sick time. I mean, we're in a, we're in a very bad situation, very bad. And it's, somebody's going to get hurt, and that's what I don't want to happen. I don't want to be attending another funeral when somebody gets shot or killed because of the safety factor. So we're, we're asking and we're behind in support of resolving this situation and getting these people back to work. That's our primary concern. I'm sure that's a sheriff's concern. But I would love to see more people hired. Because we're just, we're understaffed as it is, and now with these layoffs, we're just devastated. So I would ask that you look at the criminal justice factor. You know, I mean, I don't know if you're, you're locked in at that half percent, but if you need money for the general fund, then do a half for the, for the, for them and a quarter for general fund. I just think we need to get on board with the rest of the state. We're, we're one of the largest counties and we're one of the lowest paid, or one of the lowest sales tax rates in the county, or in the state. And it's just, we need to get on board. We need to get these people back to work. Because the citizen's safety and the officer's safety are both at risk.
Well said. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board, come on up. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Rose Dumont, and I would prefer not to state my address. I've been in this city since nineteen forty-eight. And I was, looking at you, three county commissioners, I could see myself there. I had run for county commissioner in the past. And also delegate to the Democratic Party National Convention. I worked for labor for thirty-one and a half years. United Auto Workers. And I learned a lot of things over the years. Politics has become a blood sport, down and dirty, all the way. That's another matter. I'll keep to my notes here for right now. But recently, I was cited for backing into a person. And it was on a city street. I was backing out of my granddaughter's driveway. And I think the van that I tapped very slightly was parked probably too close to the entrance of the driveway. I was cited and I didn't question it because he was within his rights and so forth. But what I do question is the two-hundred and twenty dollars that I had to pay, including the cost and court cost. I would like an explanation since I hadn't been cited for any driving violations for years and years. And the last one, many years ago, for a hundred dollars. And where is this, where is this money going?
What court were you in, ma'am?
Municipal Court.
Which, which city?
Here, here in town.
That would, that would be the city of Alaria then. We, we would have nothing.
Municipal Court.
Yes, we would have nothing to do with that if it happened in Alaria.
This is one of the problems. We're fractured.
You're absolutely right.
We're fractured. And I feel, actually, today was my hearing date in court, but since I paid in advance, naturally, they take your money. And should I stand in front of the judge to be charged the full amount? Or should I be given credit for paying in advance and a reduced amount? Now, I think this is unfair. And aside from that, having stated I worked for labor for thirty-one and a half years and having been very active in politics, I saw something in the Alaria paper recently. It stated something about the union people here in the county having received their raises maybe should be taking a cut. The steelworkers are the union. And steelworkers in general have taken all kinds of cuts and their jobs have gone overseas, as you well know. And well over three million jobs have gone overseas and they're still going overseas. We don't even have core industries to support our troops. And we say, support the troops. I find this criminal, absolutely criminal. I'm not in favor of reducing wages. However, everybody is suffering. California is forty-two billion dollars in debt and ready to go off the cliff, fractured. Are we looking for possible secession sometime in the future? It's a possibility. What I'm seeing also, since you mentioned this in the Chronicle and made it public, I too want to make public, our U.S. Congress just recently took forty-seven hundred dollars a month increase in COLA, cost of living allowance. Should they take that money? We're talking percentages. People out here get, what? Say forty thousand, twenty thousand a, a year? And what is their percentage on COLA? As versus a hundred sixty-five thousand for five hundred and thirty-five U.S. congresspeople, some making more. It seems to me forty-seven hundred dollars a month represents fifty-six thousand a year. That would support at least two families. And we should begin there if anybody takes cuts. Not to charity per se, to families who need it. And I, for one, make that recommendation. So far as Mr. Griffith said here, that maybe we should approach our state representatives, yes, I agree. I agree to build unity and harmony. And have it extended worldwide. Globalization has been a very, very destructive feature in our economy. And I don't believe that they really had a plan per se. All it was, full speed ahead for profits. And I remember their mottos very well. And I don't appreciate it. Because Mr. Metzenbaum, for one, was given all the accolades of having been a populist and supporting labor. Well, for your information, I happen to disagree. All of the unions were, how should I say? Collected in a group. And that group was under a parent organization. So when he got his votes, he got them straight through various blocks, and they were solid.
Ma'am, can I stop you there for just a minute?
Yes.
You're bringing up some excellent points, but do you have any comments or questions regarding the sales tax issue?
Yes.
Okay.
This is part of it. It's fractured. If Congress can take their wages.
But we don't, we can't control what Congress does.
Wait a minute, we vote for them. I'm saying we can.
I understand that, but as far as the Lorraine County sales tax issue, doesn't have anything to do with what raises our senators or congresspeople have taken?
We are fracturing that also. It is money and who gets it and how. And I don't like labor's jobs going overseas.
I don't either.
Okay. I'll go to the next point.
Thank you.
Because I was active in labor politics, I was drugged by a member of the Alaria police force. However, that is not an isolated situation. The FBI and local, the, and the CIA were also involved. You people owe me big time.
The city of Alaria?
City of Alaria, the county and the whole bit. Now again, it's fractured. Greg White was the new prosecutor. I went to him. It's not a county matter. I called the city solicitors. What did they say without naming names? Prove it. The very minute that was said, I know they knew it. There's a lot of low-down dirtiness going on in politics yet. And it is a blood sport and I have had it. And the only reason that certain other things haven't prevailed is because of hypnosis, mind control, and again, blood sport at its worst. Maybe because I come from a Russian-American background, I didn't think I'd have to be hyphenated. I thought I was a very good American, participating in politics and so-called democracy. I've learned an awful lot since. They play the racial card and it's still going on. In the meantime, in closing, I'd like to say, I did go to the Chronicle Telegram with my story. I went to the Lorraine Journal with my story. Not a word was printed. So I've suffered the very worst of terrorism and torture right here in this country for forty-five years and continuing. And it has to stop. And somehow, group meeting, including the state, the county, the city and the U.S. Congress, because none of them in Congress did a thing either. As a matter of fact, I was wanting to go to speak before Congress. Are you going to support the certain party? I said, they never supported me at all.
Ma'am.
Okay.
Please, if you have a comment or a question regarding the sales tax. You, you finally got your story out. I know the Journal and the Chronicle, I obviously didn't want to print it, but you got it out now. But if you have a question or a comment regarding the sales tax, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Fine, okay. Yes, I am using this form.
Your story to get revealed, okay.
Okay.
Sales tax or no, or not?
So far as sales tax is concerned, every state in the nation is suffering money problems. As far as I'm concerned, they sent the jobs overseas. If you don't have the proper revenue from the workers of America, I don't care where they are, you're not going to get the taxes. And I, for one, say no.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Come on up, sir. You are going to speak about the sales tax, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
I did too.
Just please state your name and.
My name is Kenny Yancy. I'm from Oberlin.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no speech.
Okay.
I have no agenda, but I do have a lot of questions.
Okay, well, try to answer them for me.
I, uh, reading some articles in the Chronicle Telegram prompted me to come to this meeting. First of all, I want to say, I don't, I don't think, I, that, I'm not convinced that an increase in sales tax is necessary. And, and the reason I say that, I haven't really heard from the commissioners or anyone else, all of the measures that they have taken to prevent this. I did hear from Nabokowski's office and the sheriff's office, and, and I was moved by, by their statements. I have some questions. First of all, how much do you commissioners make a year?
About seventy-six thousand.
Didn't you just get a raise?
No, we did not.
No? Can you cut your own salary?
The state mandates whether we get a raise.
Can you cut your own salary?
Did we cut ours down?
Can you?
You're not supposed to.
Can you?
I don't know, can we? No? Jerry Ennis says no.
Who sets the salary?
There's a constitutional provision that says they cannot increase or decrease their salary.
Well, who sets their salary? Well, who sets their salary?
The High Revised Code.
Okay.
State legislature.
How much does Mr. Cortez get paid?
Over a hundred.
Didn't he just get a raise?
Yes, he did.
Couldn't he have declined it?
Yes, he could.
Can you cut his salary?
No, that's civil service.
He's under civil service.
Can you cut his salary?
Once you, it's a civil service employee, regardless if it's Mr. Cortez or anyone else, once you give them something, you're not allowed to take it away.
Is that right?
So, we would've had to cut his pay and everybody else that is civil service last year.
I gotta tell you, I think that money is obscene and outrageous, and I think it takes a tremendous nerve to come to people whose median income is around twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars and ask them to pay more taxes to keep Mr. Cortez and others. Does he have an assistant?
He does.
How much does his assistant get paid?
Eighty.
Is his assistant on civil service?
They all are, sir. It's a civil, it's a personnel board review.
And how do you get these jobs?
Mr. Yancey, I believe our Assistant County Administrator declined his raise, is that correct, I heard? No?
Oh, that's not true.
I thought somebody told me that. He's buying, he's paying the sales tax.
May I pardon?
Nothing, never mind. Was being facetious, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just here to tell you, I don't think it's possible for myself and my friends and neighbors to keep you in the style that you've become accustomed to. If layoffs have to be made, make layoffs.
They've already been done. They've already been done, Mr. Yancey.
If necessary, you can do more, ma'am.
Oh, sure.
Yes, I can, without a doubt. That's why I think Commissioner...
Now, let me ask you another question.
Take pay cuts.
Do you have paid vacations?
No.
No, we work twenty-four seven.
Do any county employees have paid vacations?
Yes, they do.
Do they have paid holidays?
Yes.
Oh, yes, they do.
Do they have paid sick time?
Yes.
Do they have longevity pay?
No.
None of them have longevity pay?
No, that's the city.
Didn't the non-union workers just get a raise, or you want to give them a raise?
They, we have a resolution, can I answer you?
Yes or no, it'd be just fine.
We have a resolution that covers, the non-bargaining people reflect or mirror whatever bargaining, and there's a resolution that states that. So, we would've had, we should've or could've, or needed to, last year, change that resolution. So, what happened was, the non-bargaining automatically received a pay increase because bargaining received a pay increase.
And how much did that cost?
For non-bargaining, it was about forty thousand, and for bargaining, it was about twenty-seven thousand. So, even if we didn't get raises in the Commissioners Department, we may have been able to call back one custodian. That's all it would've saved.
That's one job.
One job.
That's one job.
I understand that.
All these county employees that get paid vacations, paid holidays, are they all union?
No, some are union, some are civil service.
Those that are not union are civil service?
The majority, I think there's three of them that are at-will employees, and that is our three assistants.
But they get paid holidays?
Yes.
Yes.
And paid vacations?
They do.
And how much would it cost if you didn't pay those holidays and those vacations? How much could you save there?
I don't think that's an optional.
Why is that, ma'am?
These employees were, Jerry, would you answer with respect to the High Revised Code?
High Revised Code provides provisions that you have to provide for a certain minimum amount of vacation, minimum amount of sick pay.
Paid?
Yes.
For who, just the county workers?
Ohio Administrative Code...
There is different government, all government employees.
All government employees?
Ohio Administrative Code 124.
Says what?
And mandates a certain amount of vacation time and sick time for public employees. The county currently provides the minimum required standards with sick time and vacation that is mandated by the Ohio Administrative Code.
And what would it take to get that changed?
State legislature.
Okay.
You could do the courts of the unions. Unions lost everything through the courts.
Ma'am, this gentleman's at the podium.
The holiday pays by federal laws.
The federal law says that...
That you could pay, everybody gets paid certain holidays.
That's not true.
Federal and county and state employees.
Oh, federal, county, and state, you said everybody.
Well, that's who he meant. I'm the new attorney, interpreting Jerry's legal opinion.
Anyway, I don't think you've done enough, and I think this idea of enacting it under emergency provisions, where I would pay the tax for six months before I got a chance to vote on it, is nothing short of having my pockets picked politically, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Yancey. I'd like to comment, if I may, Madam Chair, that in nineteen ninety-one, the first year I was the Commissioner, the Commissioners found themselves in a similar situation at that time, and they did exactly what this Board is proposing to do now. They enacted a sales tax on an emergency basis and began collecting it immediately, and also put it on the ballot for November of that year, where it was not retained by the voters, but we took the very same action that we're talking about taking.
Well, I see that as dishonest.
Not at all, sir. Within the confines of the High Revised Code that is enacted by the High Legislature.
I said dishonest.
It's neither, sir, neither.
Karen Kleben, seventy-one, forty-two, Murray Ridge Road, Alaria Township, Ohio. I understand what the last gentleman was saying here, but on the same token, I understand, being a former county employee, that the state does, they're the ones that determine the vacation time, and it goes through whether you work for city, state, or county, but if the employees aren't making that much money. In fact, the employees that were let go, that were in the union, were very low-paying employees. When we go back to what the Commissioners can do, I mean, you look at the Sheriff, let's go back to the Sheriff. They had, a lot of our safety has been given up. That's very frustrating. I mean, I live in the township, so we're on our own, and believe me, I'm glad I have a concealed weapon, because I'm gonna be carrying it. I have to. We're losing our police protection. But did the Commissioners do enough? I'd be for passing a tax if I seen the Commissioners cutting back.
We cut back twenty percent, just like everybody cut back.
No, I'm not done, you know? Like my husband and I, you know, we're on a fixed income. We're both retired or disabled. We can't go to the state and say, "Give us more money so I can get this gallon of milk," or "Give us more money so I can get that T-bone instead of..."
Hamburger.
Yeah, instead of hamburger. We can't do that. We have to cut back. So, what did the Commissioners do to cut back? The day they laid off some, laid off their low-paying, low-keyed employees, they had a party catered with alcohol in a public building, and the general fund paid, am I not correct, fourteen hundred dollars for this party, Christmas party? Now, understandably, Mr. Cortez, he's under civil service, he's protected, so you can't cut his pay, but you certainly can replace him and get somebody that could use a job a lot less pay. As far as his assistant, how many jobs would his assistant make if you got rid of the assistant? We're talking at least two deputy jobs.
Actually, Karen, just to, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Are you talking about Mr. Twining?
Exactly.
Okay. I don't know if you're aware, but when that issue of hiring Mr. Twining as the Assistant County Administrator came up, I was totally against that.
I believe it.
I was. I voted against it. I didn't think it was a good idea. But in his defense, we're down a Community Development Director, we don't have an Airport Director, and we don't have a Transit Director. So, Mr. Cortez, or Mr. Twining is actually doing the job of three directors, so he may be called an Assistant County Administrator, but he is a man of many hats. Even though I was against it, I now have to stick up for him and tell you that he does, he is earning his money, plus he has to work with Mr. Cortez.
He's getting paid, and let's talk about the community development.
And we also don't have an HR Director.
And we don't have an HR Director.
And we haven't had an HR Director for a long time.
Can I say one more thing? I hate to interrupt you, but while I'm thinking about it, year after year, the last three years at least, we've been down at least ten positions, I think, in the Commissioner's Office. So, year after year after year, all the money that would've gone to salaries from the Commissioner's Office has been put back in the general fund. It's gotta be at least two million, three million dollars that we've returned to the general fund year after year after year, because we know, we knew that this day was coming. We've been planning for it, we've been telling people about it, and even though nobody listens, we knew it was coming.
You know what I mean?
Year after year, the money's been put back.
People are listening. Believe me, we're listening, and it's not just...
But you're not hearing.
It's not just the county.
It's everywhere.
It's the state, it's the United States, it's global. Some say we're in a recession. People like me say we're in a depression.
I agree.
So, we have to cut back. What is Commissioners doing? Yes, you're saying you're putting money into the fund, not enough. You gotta quit having these fourteen-hundred-dollar parties.
Karen, you have to know that that party was sponsored by the Lorraine County Growth Partnership, and it's my understanding that there was no general fund dollars in there.
Let me respond, please, Commissioners, and for you, Karen. I know you have requested some public records, which regard to pay-ins. You won't find it in the pay-ins. I'd be more than happy to provide you the paperwork with the invoices to the billed sponsors to pay for that portion of the party, and to also put you in touch with Team Lorraine County, who sponsored the beverages for the party, and with JVS, who sponsored the pastries for the party. At last tally, and again, you're welcome to come over and get the paperwork, and I can understand your concern with this, quite frankly, even though we've had some differences before. I think we've got twenty-seven dollars of general fund money in the whole Growth Partnership reception that we use as a business outreach every year. And they indicated to me you have been looking for public records. I want to give you the right ones, so that you can see that. So, if you see Sandy, you're welcome to all the invoices that we bill back to the sponsors. Did we pay fourteen hundred dollars? Yes, we had to, because we had to secure the services, and that was in advance, and then we bill out to sponsors, and we have those invoices available for anybody who wishes to come up and verify that. And the Lorraine County Chamber paid for the entertainment that night as part of their Growth Partnership sponsorship.
So, Lorraine County Commissioner's Office on the fifth floor has became a party hall for your vendors?
It wasn't a party hall for our vendors, it was to business folks in Lorraine County. It was a business outreach that we've done now for, this will be the third year, and it was businesses and high-ranking CEOs, officials, and government officials. And it wasn't a party, it was a meet and greet where people, there was no speeches, there was no, there was an individual playing guitar, and there was a networking opportunity that we wanted to have here on the fifth floor to introduce business to the things that are going on with the Growth Partnership and the economic development activities taking place within Lorraine County. These things are necessary so that we get people to become aware of all the undertakings that the Growth Partnership is doing, and Team Lorraine County, and the Chamber, and the College, and the JVS, and our partners continue to grow, and I'm pleased to tell you that Oberlin College has sent me a letter, and they want to join the Growth Partnership also, because they now see the advantages of everything that's going on up there.
I don't want to get off the sales tax issue.
The outreach that they do each and every year for this Christmas party is a good thing. I did not attend, only because it did happen on the day that we were laying off our people, and I just thought it was very bad timing, but what they do, what they've done in the past, I think, is a good thing.
And you can only be respected for that, Lori. I mean, you really do feel for the employees with something like that. But back to wanting the residents to pass this tax. You know, you went and asked the residents for the sales tax. Four to one, said no, because we're broke, we don't have the money.